This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to dive into the following schools and departments: high school, middle school, athletics, IT, and facilities. Just to recap last week's budget workshop, the requested increase for the 2020-2021 school year is $2,933,932. This reflects a 5.4% increase. Within this increase, there are no new positions or programs, and the 5.4% increase accounts for all contractual obligations, cost of healthcare benefits, and increases in tuition and transportation. There were a few questions from the board from last week's meeting, and we wanted to address them before jumping into the high school. So Pam has a few to start.
I had a couple. Joe, where'd you go? They moved everybody on me. You had asked about the staff development account for Ridge Road. You had noted that there was a very large amount of $24,175, where most of the requests in those line items were around $2,400. And it is because of teachers' college costs. Ridge Road is the only school in the district that is not a Title I school, so we could not use Title I grant funds to pay for teachers' college portion for that elementary school. What we did was transfer funds from lots of different accounts to try to make up that amount.
And that just happened this year. It's a metric that's set by the federal government that makes it happen whether you're a Title I school or not. So Title I isn't at Ridge Road anymore, so we had to allocate funds differently.
Okay. Thank you.
Good catch. Thank you.
Amanda, what's Title I? What's that encompass?
Title I takes into account your free and reduced lunch counts, and it's federal monies that are used to improve literacy and numeracy, and now they've added science into that.
Okay, so it's based on the student academic and also the student profile? That determines if you are or if you're not?
Right. It's called an entitlement grant, and it's used to help... It's targeted for low-performing students and to give additional resources.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But we get the Title IX based on the reduced lunch.
On its Title I.
Title I, I'm sorry.
Correct. That's the formula that the federal government uses.
So they don't look at it as how the student... Each school is doing academically. They look at how each school is economically.
Yeah.
It's a formula that's used. And moving forward, like Green Acres may fall off of that too, just the way our numbers are trending, but we won't move that till next year. So we'll adjust accordingly if that's the case.
That's the question I was going to ask for the Title I schools. Ridge Road is no longer... Green Acres may drop off. How about Monwhee's?
Fine.
They're staying... Are their numbers increasing?
Not really, but our entitlement isn't going down either, so we'll just distribute it differently.
Okay. Thank you.
And the only other follow-up I had was, Amanda, you had asked about getting the comparison of the full insurance to our self-insured health insurance fund. And I did meet with our representatives from Brennan Brown earlier this week. They're definitely going to do a line-by-line comparison so that we are feeling very comfortable that we have gone in the right direction, that they will provide us that within the next week. They did ask me to share that they anticipate still an 8% to 10% savings even with the renewal where it is at the moment.
Can I ask, were we seeing a similar trend on the town side? So I know where we stand trend-wise from the Board of Ed side, but how about the town side?
I don't know exactly what the town's renewal increase was or is at this point, but in my discussion yesterday, I believe they are lower, and the reason for that is simply claim history. Their claims were running better than ours this year.
And also the number of people that are on the town versus what we have.
That plays into it as well, enrollment as well, and claim history.
I think the town is under 100.
Honestly, I don't know.
Yeah, that's something, and we have a lot more people enrolled.
And prior to... Because we're at the end of our three-year contract for this, right?
Yes.
Prior to redoing another three-year contract, is it the town that votes to do that? Or do we... Are we consulted on that as well?
We will be consulted. I'm part of the collaborative. We are a separate entity from the town.
Thanks.
Okay. That's all I had.
And Goldie, I just wanted to follow up with your question from last week regarding the laptops at the middle school. And Jen, Kay, please feel free to jump in. So at the end of last school year, those laptops that were originally bought for the middle school were three years old, which, when students are using three-year-old laptops, that's really like the lifespan of them at that time. So Jen was able to recycle them and get some funds for those recycled computers. And what we did with them is we applied them to under-budgeted areas within this year's budget.
Okay.
Did I get it all, Jen?
Yep.
Anything else before we jump into high school? Any follow-ups from last week's presentation or student services? So we can open up some questions around North Haven High School funding this year? Any needed detail?
So several questions. So what is Program Code 52? That's not in my charts of accounts. And I'm looking for Program Code 52 and Program Code 61. I think they're like some kind of maintenance and administrative, but I can't really... I don't want to assume.
52 is in.
61, okay. Thank you.
I have it here somewhere. If you give me a moment. I thought it was instructional. It's fine. It wasn't. I don't... I think the problem is there's some issue here, and it doesn't go up ahead.
52.
I was looking there trying to answer a question to Ross. I didn't remember one question. Regarding printing at $9,300. What is most of our printing charges for?
Printing is, we have this letterhead. We have... This also is our passes, referral forms, generic stuff we use for the building. And I want to say, I think diplomas comes under printing too. Envelopes.
Okay.
That kind of stuff. Yeah.
I can get you...
I think it's fair to keep what...
Electronic.
I said you have to keep getting diplomas.
We get to handwrite them if you have next term in ship.
Can we not just email them?
Email? Can we email them now?
No, no, I don't need one. I just actually was wondering, you know, what comes under printing?
Yeah.
And I don't think we print out our handbooks anymore, right?
We don't. And so that has reduced over the years, but it's pretty much flat now because, you know, the things that have come off, have come off. There used to be a very heavy budget line. It's just...
Maybe eventually we'll save money by having the ID cards have the pass automatically on them, and we can do something automated.
That'll bring us really into the math.
We're going to embed chips in everybody's.
Guess that's where I'm going. All right. To remind this question. 61 is plant maintenance.
Is plant maintenance? Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? The line item in regards to other purchases, licensed software, it's about $36,963. That's for software licenses strictly, or other things fall under that?
I think between Jen and I, because they work at that... I'm sorry, the last three numbers that you were referring to?
It is 412. I'm reading it correctly.
It's page three?
It's page three. So other purchases, licensed software.
Oh, okay. Other purchases.
Yes.
Yes, that would be the licensing and software. As I said, we were doing a little bit of adjustment with the account codes. So you'll see that this year it's in the account code, or the previous year it was in the licensing software, and now it's called another purchase service.
Okay, so the cost increased by close to $7,000?
From two years ago. From this year, it increased minimally.
Okay.
On page four, it's total instructional supplies. It looks like in 2020, it was a little over $132,000, and this year, you know, for the 2021, it's $94,000, almost $95,000, which is like roughly $30,000 drop. What's that?
That's a combination of the school's requests and the schools being asked to reduce their budget as a result of where we are with the budget in total.
So do you know like what type of... Because it just says instructional supplies, and I know there's, you know, different line items. I was just going by the total, but do we know some of the things that were taken out? Because it looks like something went down from $20,000 to $2,000, and, you know, there were a couple of big drops.
That's the family and consumer science line item is 112 on page four, from $22,000 to $2,000.
Right.
Are we going to have Brent next year?
Family and consumer?
Yeah, I'm going back to your book, too.
You have... Remind me that department, because I have this by department, so I can go with it.
It should be 11.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a big drop in this, and this is what the department requested.
It could... Let me just take a look at that again.
There wasn't a cut either. This was what the coordinator requested.
$22,000. They requested $2,000. It could be mistaken.
Any purchase... Oh. Oh, you have $2,000?
Yeah.
$22.
Oh, no, it's 22.
Yeah, that's an error. Good catch. We'll have to make an adjustment. Actually, the more I look at it, I'm getting to wonder.
I'll see.
And there were a lot of consumables in that department, then, you know, between the groceries, and then wood for the woodworking and mechanical and stuff. So that is an area that we need to find.
I was going to say thank you.
We need to add $20,000 onto this budget?
Yep. I think we need to adjust that.
Adjust. Yes. I had thought, hey, maybe it meant that the baking classes, the culinary was doing well so sufficiently with their fundraising.
Everybody brings a bag of flowers.
We will adjust it.
You know, I've been so happy with the culinary department now having grown. And of course, you have more students. You're going to have to have more supplies. And I know at the beginning, I think two years ago, Tracy had talked about, you know, needing supply. I mean, you just... You need those supplies. And I would like to continue the good work they're doing.
No, I appreciate that. So, you know, we were not asked to cut the actual request. I think that was a mere clerical thing. That occurred between this budget and mine, but we're not asked to reduce those necessary instructional supplies by the district in any way.
That's good. Yeah, I mean, because when I saw almost $40,000 now for instructional supplies, I just kind of was a red flag, so I just wanted to make sure.
I appreciate the support, and you must have been very proud of me, Joe, but I appreciate that first day.
So back to the drop from the $22,000 to the $2,000. When you say we're going to adjust it, what does that mean exactly?
Means I'm going to...
Find it somewhere else.
Somewhere else. Yes.
Okay. So borrow it from someplace else and put it there. Could we just make digital food?
Of all places, I definitely cannot underfund that line item.
Pretty printing.
You know, honestly, I guess that's what we're going to have to take a hard look at, but we will adjust it.
I have a question for Ross. Ross?
Yes.
In terms of textbooks, is there a trend? I know in universities and higher education, there's a push towards more electronic textbooks and things like that. Are we seeing the same thing in high schools? And that's going to affect eventually the cost that the district has to pay?
Well, we are. It's going to affect the format, but the publishing companies aren't going to make those books free either. I think it's going to be that we're paying different people for the resources. You know, Jen's phenomenal, and she has a good sense of the direction this is going. But they're licensure models mostly, which is good because you don't end up with old seven- or eight-year, 10-year-old texts. But they're not free or cheap either, so I think the money would be allocated from the physical textbook fund to that fund. It's begun. We have it in some areas, but it's definitely a work in progress.
So it's not going... Sorry, go ahead.
As we bring them in, we're bringing in them digitally, and then sometimes we bring in a class set of the textbooks, so there's actually a textbook that can be shared across multiple classes. But kids aren't bringing their books home.
Okay.
And the good news is we've had the flexibility to do that where it makes sense. So we haven't been pressured to rush into it when the materials are not quite good enough already yet because some of the publishers rush these things out to say they have a digital version. So we're taking a step at a time as it makes sense, department by department, and they go through the process to get approval for these moves.
Thanks.
So to follow up on textbooks, the language arts line item for textbooks, the requested versus the recommended, was cut by about $12,000. And I'm just wondering, is that okay? Like, are we...
Word language textbooks?
It is on page four of our budget. It's in Program Code 2. Now, with the language arts.
You were at $48,100, Russ, and then reduced it to 36,100.
Oh, that's English? Sorry, that's language arts. Yes. So that started out at a very high number, $48,000. It was kind of a wish list. That far exceeds what we do on an annual basis in there in terms of growth or expenditures. It's part of our movement to a workshop model. We did reduce it about 25%, which still puts us at double what our typical annual text budget is, and it will allow us to make this movement to a workshop model, which is going to be very good for our kids and good for our program. So, you know, while you can't always have every cent you want, this is a fantastic support of that progress for our English department.
And we actually pre-bought some just recently to get it started a little bit so that they can pilot it in a few classrooms. So that took a little bit out of what we needed for next year into the current budget.
And we did it in conjunction with the department coordinator, who's very pleased with the budget as it stands right now, and said that is a huge step, and she's very excited. And then we'll put in more next year, you know, if we need to continue to move in that direction.
Ross, for next year, is your certain population going to stay the same?
About steady.
Steady. Okay.
So I just want to go back to page one, and I want to just ask a question about Program Code 24. It's listed as interscholastic on charts of accounts. Is that athletics only, or does that include other interscholastic activity like debate or band or something?
That is, because it's a $3,200 addition, which is student activity in the 24. It is primarily athletic.
Primarily athletics?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Is... So that takes me to page two, where there is the rental of the building. And that's an athletic building?
That is for rental fees, like the ice rink and various... I don't even know what else we rent.
We also... We put money aside. We need to use indoor space either at the Court Club, at North Haven Health and Racket, also Sportsplex in North Branford for indoor practices. Sometimes it's used, sometimes it's not, depending on the weather.
Thank you. I also saw that both the postage and the printing in the high school budget were reduced. Postage by 26.8% and printing by 5%.
I will address the postage. I'll be honest, the high school didn't put anything in for postage, so I added it. So while I forgot the $20,000 for our family and consumer science, I did catch the postage. And the printing was, I believe, a minimal reduction based on just where they're trending at the moment.
And then on page four, it looks like we are not requesting anything for library books? Is that... Is that okay? Is that right?
No, that's not okay.
It's a... So page four, and it's...
Yeah, the library book request is $10,000.
But that was a reduction, was it not?
No.
Okay. Stick around. And that's all that, too. Amanda, which line is this?
It's at the bottom.
Just the whole bottom line?
It's one up from the bottom. It's 642A. So we're in the bottom.
Apologize.
How much is that?
$10,000.
Is that going to be adjusted, too?
Well, I can only think of one or two areas that we can potentially do that. One is superintendent's PD. And we do have some adjustments that we can do with some of our custodial supplies as well. I believe I can absorb both of those, but if we find any others, we might have a problem. And would we request the $10,000 for the library books? I guess that's my question. If that's what they asked for, is that the board would want to keep in there.
I think what we need to do is keep that, maybe keep a running tally, and then when we go through middle school, I mean, other problems, see if there's anything else that may have been missed that has to be adjusted because it may mean that we need to go back to this budget and talk amongst yourselves and find it before we can vote on it.
We can do... I'm sorry.
Middle school, athletics, and IT. Just make a running list of that. Because we're at $30,000 right now.
Yep.
We can do an analysis of the library book needs because some of the library stuff is covered by our digital subscriptions, which is a huge movement, of course. So we can look carefully at that so we can give input to Pam and Mr. Strickland for that decision.
I really wasn't picking on the high school. I don't have... The numbers got missed. There's a lot of number from a lot of things, Pam. To be honest, I have a feeling part of it is the upload into MUNIS, and we thought we were being super careful, and apparently similar problems from last year. So I'm glad they were caught. Thank you.
So on page five, I have a question about the other supplies. It's the interscholastic line item again, which is $3,200, $24,12, or $6,910. It's $34,855. Can you tell me what is included in other supplies for that?
Actually, I'm going to defer that one to Steve since his budget...
$6,910 is our equipment account. So each team has a $6,910 line item, and it could be everything from tape. It's a soccer team. It could be goals, pointer flags. I mean, it's a wide range of equipment.
And it covers everything from like fencing, all the swimming, everything, the entire athletic program.
That's great, but then we also have 7/3B, which is listed as equipment, which is another $40,000. Is that different?
7/3B, I think, is new equipment and...
And uniforms, right?
Right, it is new equipment.
And it might be... Is it uniforms, too?
I don't know. I'm asking.
And that makes a lot of sense.
Okay. So we do like one team here?
We do three teams. Every five years, it's another three team. It's a five-year cycle.
Cool.
So this was from five years ago, this actual expense?
So the teams that are listed this year are football, which is about close to $10,000 for new uniforms.
Okay.
There's also two other teams. I don't have it in front of me.
In terms of uniforms, is there... I know the way it works in college, but in terms of high school, is there some kind of deal or partnership with, for example, like Nike, Adidas and all that, that they just supply uniforms to schools?
There are companies that represent Nike or Adidas that do full-school deals. But although I looked into that, this was a couple of years ago, so a different administration, we did not agree to go that route. They don't necessarily lower their per-item cost. It's more of you get free dollars in their company to spend on other things, so equipment or other uniforms. So the one that we use mostly for uniforms, they're interested in signing a deal with us, but I've always kind of kept them at arms length because there hasn't been that interest.
Almost like a spit, let's just say, we buy 10 uniforms from them, and from that 10 uniforms, they'll give us a spip of $1,500 to buy more equipment. It's going to be more uniforms from them for $1,500. But would they give us a discount on those uniforms? Or is it just kind of even out?
It depends on what you buy because you can buy stock items or you can buy custom items. It could be sublimated or not sublimated. So there's a lot of range of, you know, what...
Well, if it's a specific school uniform, and we wanted to say NH on it, that's a custom item, right?
It is.
Okay. And also one other last question. So if it was a Nike or a Reebok, or would we then have their logo on our clothing?
Yeah, you would because it's a Nike uniform, for sure. And usually those companies only... Like Billings, for example, is one of the companies that we work with. They're primarily Nike. There are other companies like East Bay that do a lot of different brands. But like East Bay doesn't initially do a lot of uniforms. It's more footwear. So it really depends on the company that you decide to go with.
And one other question. Am I interrupting you, Goldie?
No, no, no.
Our football uniforms, every five years, right? So they're ready for it now, right?
And it's not... That's only like... Offense would be, I mean, home or away. It's not the entire set.
Yeah.
So that would be... We're going to go... We're going to replace the whites because the whites, because we play on a grass field, they get very stained.
Yeah, even though they have that laundry service or something that they pay for.
We do, but after five years.
Yeah, five years. Okay.
It's a wear and tear.
Where are we with hockey, by the way?
I'm sorry?
On hockey with your uniforms?
Well, Hockey bought uniforms a couple of years ago. They're not for another couple more years.
Okay.
And they also, they have several sets that they've been rotating through.
Okay. You know why I'm asking, I think?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you share?
Huh?
Can you share what?
I'm just... Because they were done a couple of years ago, so I'm just wondering why they... If they were up there, too.
Do we have a cleaning service that cleans the football uniforms?
Yeah, the Booster Club, their parents' association pays for that.
Oh, we don't pay for that?
We do not pay for that.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Sorry?
I said thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I'm a little nervous.
Thank you for...
You keep asking, I'll come up with more questions.
Good. Okay. I got lots of post-it notes.
We saw those.
So it looks like the initial requested budget was reduced by about 7.7% or a little under $69,000 from the originally requested full high school budget. So the number that I have, I'm wondering if one is right or if it's missing, maybe the $30,000. And two, I'm wondering, like, what aren't we doing with that roughly $69,000?
I'm sorry, where did you come up with $69,000? Were you on the six?
Oh, you know what? It was over the prior year budget. I'm sorry. $69 reduction over prior year.
So now if we're adding that $30, we're only about $3,000.
It's like 30, it's like 30 from the requested.
And I, I can tell you that a few of the items that were reduced were items that were in the initial. But now we're almost to the initials, so.
Yeah.
So the initial was pretty much level funded. And the things that were reduced, that show in the superintendent column, were cafeteria, a request for cafeteria tables, indoor and outdoor. Some ongoing theater audio and lighting maintenance for about $10,000. The cafeteria tables were $6,000. The textbooks that we talked about, we took $12,000 out of that. They were asking for a new PA claim for $3,000. And then there was some discussion between Russ and Melinda to reduce the professional development because it is just going to be readjusted and come out of your budget instead of the high school's budget.
What did you say the theater audio was again?
It says ongoing, and Russ can definitely elaborate, but ongoing theater, audio and lighting maintenance estimated at $10,000. The revenue that we get from the musicals and things like that, is that go, all of it go directly back into the theater program?
Yes, it does. Yeah, that's what they use to pay for their, you know, expenses in terms of buying, renting costumes and buying the rights to the play and doing, you know, all their expenses.
That was going to be another question of mine too, is like where are, if, if Program Code 24 is athletics, like where are the line items for the other departments like theater? Are we, are those funded through, exclusively through what they do themselves or is their Board of Ed funds going?
Well, the drama cooperative funded through themselves. And I know, right, that one that they do, I think they're doing Fans of the Opera there. That's the drama cooperative and they fund that, right?
Correct.
Our internal drama group, I think in, they're self-funded in many ways, but they also get money somewhere from within the school district, I believe. Is the drama cooperative also high school or just the middle school play? I don't know. Maybe just the middle. It might be just the middle school.
Yeah.
The all-school musical is supported by the Board of Ed in that there are stipends for some of the adults that have to work. Technical director, musical director, choral choreographer. The rest of the expenses come back from ticketing. So that's their budget, they have, you know, and it's been adequate. And thanks to the board for the support of that, it has allowed the program to flourish and it works very well that way. You know, the theater club, basically they do plays that have no royalties and they don't have a lot of expenses and they make it work based on the resources we have in-house. The set materials and costumes and fabric and stuff like that. So that is a self-sustaining thing and then they do take some income from ticket sales for that, so that works as well.
And then Pam, we set up a, an account this year for revenue that came from the rental of the fields, the various fields. Do we know how much was generated by, through the rental of those fields?
It's very minimal. At this point, it's under $4,000.
Oh, okay. Very minimal. Okay. And where does that go?
We wouldn't put that in the budget.
No, 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 no.
Put earmuffs specifically for what's needed in 10 years for those fields.
So that is put away separately for the replacement?
Correct. It's in your special revenue funds and there is a specific line item just for that.
Perfect, thank you.
So have we collected those funds from everybody that has been billed for those things? Yes, I believe we have.
We have.
Steve, talking about tickets, I know we've talked about this before and I always forget. What happens at the door of the football games, the basketball games when we collect money for admission?
That money is used towards our equipment account. If, you know, like if there's something that we, you know, is out of budget and if we need it, we get that through that account.
So if it's $5 a person, do we get all $5 of it or does it go to C I A C at all?
Well, the money that goes to C I A C is any event that we're hosting that's a, you know, a mutual site event. And typically they provide their own tickets, so that's why the money goes to them. So we have in our budget, all of our fees are built in, so we pay C I A C, we pay the S T C for our membership, but that's, that's built into the budget.
Is that the, is that on page six, like the $28,000, like the C I A C, is that expensive?
$28,000?
Yeah, so under dues and fees for Program Code 24, it's $28,395 this year.
It's not a, our membership to C I A C is much less than that, but it's a combination of S T C, C I A C. We pay fees to go to certain events, tournaments, things like that. So we have to pay for, if we make a state tournament, we have to pay to go into that state tournament.
Rude.
So yeah, so it's a couple of sort of.
Should be like college where you make.
Right, let's do that.
I don't know. Saw UConn today. They're saying they're in a rare later athletic program because of declining ticket sales.
I read that briefly in the headline today.
That's all I had on high school.
Anyone else around high school? Any other questions or questions? We can move on to North Haven Middle School.
How many sticky notes you got there?
A bunch.
Go ahead and lay it down.
So, okay, so on page one, it's for, looks like professional and technical, I think. Professional and technical services for the athletic line item again. We're looking at a pretty, an increase over last year or is this a reallocation from a different line?
It's a reallocation. What we discovered last year is that we did not separate between the middle school and the high school. And actually, I've been working closely with Jen Forbes out of Steve's office to make certain that we need those adjusting entries. But that's all that is. So you can see that the year before, it wasn't that different.
So are we looking at an increase over last year or a flat or a decrease over last year? Do we know?
I'm not certain, but from my recollection, I would say it's just a slight increase.
And what does professional and technical services cover in that line item?
In that line item?
What's the account number?
It's 3,22412, 3,300 at the end.
3,300.
Professional, technical. We have one for the high school. I was just looking at it before I came in, so I'll try to find some backup on it.
Steve, while she's looking at that, the middle school, how many athletic programs?
Eight.
Those are soccer?
Boys and girls soccer, cross country in the fall, boys and girls basketball in the winter, softball, baseball and outdoor track and field.
Patrick.
Thank you.
And that is for payment of officials.
Oh, payment of, that makes, that makes sense. Cool. Perfect. So then on page two, when it comes to the athletic transportation, I'm not kidding, I'm just, these are the outliers here. It's a huge increase from last year. It's up 172%.
Maybe.
Is that an adjustment?
Yes, it is. My note to myself is we've not properly separated from the high school. So what was happening is a lot of the middle school expenses were being expensed improperly to the high school code. So this reflects a more equal balance of what the middle school portion of that transportation should be.
So overall though, I think athletic transportation is up 16% total, in total. Is that right?
It is. It's a combination of things. It's not only the increase in the cost, but as Steve was pointing out, it's also just overall increase in usage. And as we're more successful and we're using more transportation, so it was an adjustment. And these are requests from the departments that we were looking at and they are our target.
Teams are too good. They're too good. Yeah, for that. Okay, cool. And are we, do we have a plan if our teams continue to skyrocket to athletic success, to account for these 16% increases in budget annually? Because we want, obviously we want our athletic teams to be successful. That's a good thing, but like.
I will say, as you are aware, our bus contract ends this year. So I think that's something we will take into account when we look to bid when we renegotiate.
So the bus in is a big increase for athletics?
Um, I think for the usage it is and we did have a 4% increase in this budget.
Just for the bus?
Yeah.
The only thing that I would add is we, we have to put that into the budget because we are hoping and expecting that we would do well. But for example, our football team didn't make the playoffs, so that money that we budgeted for at least two games away is not going to be used. And that's, that's going to be stay in the transportation budget and just used for other teams or just.
And then readjust it next year when we need the money for something else.
There's no free money, right?
Laurie, Bridget, want to talk about the late bus? Well, first of all, again, is your student population expected to increase, stay the same, decrease?
Our biggest group is in seventh grade and so we'll probably stay about the same next year.
Okay, good, okay. Late bus, now when do the late bus run?
We currently have it two days a week.
Okay.
And it comes around 3:30, 3:40.
Okay. And then student usage?
We share it with the high school.
Okay.
And so the kids sign up in the morning and so the bus company can arrange the room home.
We also align that with our Quinipiac tutors. So we have tutors from Quinipiac that come and stay after school on those days specifically for the students.
That is cool. It's two days a week and chance of increasing it to three.
Right now, I think our teachers have done a nice job of aligning the programs that they also do after school to the days where there's late buses, if it's a program that will run that long. Some of our shorter programs are on different days. We're definitely not filling the bus to capacity or our Quinipiac tutors to capacity where I think you'd say they're not getting enough attention, maybe add a day. The two days seems to work currently.
That's good. Okay, good. Thank you.
So on page three, under licenses and software, there's a computer sciences line item for about, almost $20,000. What are we licensing at the middle school level and what are we teaching for computer science?
I don't think that's just the computer science course.
No, it's not just computer science. That's technology, all the technology accounts, I'm 14 of them. And some of those are for classroom instruction, some of them are just for technology in general. So that would be pretty much all of the software that is dedicated solely for, or even middle school use. Some of that is for art, some of it is for science, some of it is for math, some of it is for the library. It's really a mix.
Cool. What are we teaching? Are we teaching any programming languages at the middle school level?
Yep, absolutely. They start programming languages all the way from third grade and they go straight on up through senior year of high school. Anything from, you know, basic blockly down in the elementary schools. They do a lot with the Lego stuff right now at the middle school. Running to program with the e robots. Kevin Fuji and Enelessi run that program out of the middle school. And they do, depending on the grade level, not just with computer programming. They also do engineering activities with them, kind of, you know, make your own mousetrap car kinds of things, but some really more advanced cool stuff what they're doing with it. So it's a combination of programming, robotics. They do a little bit of graphics in it and engineering.
Thank you. Then I have a question on, it's a, it's a more general question. Are we covering nutrition anywhere at the middle school?
Yes, they do some of that through health and P E.
So that's covered in both. It would be like nutritional budget would be under both line items, both health and P E?
Right, right. You won't see something for like a specific nutrition program, but they do cover that in those areas.
And then my last question on page three is for the art textbooks, which is, it's 111, it's like the first line in the textbook line and it's been blank for two years. And that seems to be an outlier as far as textbooks are concerned. And I just wanted to check to see, are we okay on art textbooks?
Yeah, they typically don't use a textbook. They use, our department has done really a fabulous job writing their curriculum. For anyone that's been even watching it from elementary up. Most of their, their products that they use are like using a piece of art, creating a rubric for it, talking about how to make it, kind of much more hands-on.
It's not like art history.
Right, right.
Most of it's consumable material.
Yes.
So probably.
Yeah, when you look at their budget, their instructional supplies is always very high. And even going back to look at reductions, like we know when we look at art, that's not the place we can take from instructional supplies because they don't use any other pieces. You know, they need everything that they have. That makes sense. Thank you.
What is custodial supplies? Is that like cleaners and things like that? Yeah, exactly. And in the past, we had one district account, but in order to try to make certain all our expenses are being coded to locations, we changed that this year. So is that really enough money to clean all of our schools for a whole year?
That's just for the middle.
That's just the middle school.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we had a total budget of about $90,000 and we just split it up. Sorry.
But that's not reflected in both budgets, is it? Is it reflected as a line item in the middle school budget and the facilities budget?
No, it's not in the facilities budget.
Okay.
You'll see the previous year in the facilities budget as a total. Some of the lines, quite honestly, could have overlapped because we run these by location. And then we run the facilities by a function code. So sometimes you could potentially see them both, but as long as they're the same account code, we didn't duplicate the entries.
Right under the line that Amanda was talking about, the next line down is language arts. And there was an original, and what the superintendent said, like a $10,000 difference. Do you know what was cut out of there?
Yes, so we had planned to really boost classroom libraries. They've worked really hard to get libraries up and running. And they were a little bit of kind of the dream libraries to put in. So we worked really closely with Sue to get a little bit of a reduction to each classroom's library. So there will be an increase in books. It just won't be as many books as she had originally targeted for. And we just made notes. So as we go over the next couple of years, we continue to increase it instead of doing it all at once.
Okay, thank you.
There was also a request, a kind of a wish list request in the eighth grade curriculum, but we've been doing a lot of work with the program coordinator to rewrite that and make it fit the needs within the realm of what we have right now with access to choice texts and things like that. So we were able to kind of work around that.
Thanks.
So on page four, same thing with foreign language textbooks. It's a, we, the original request was like 400, it came down to 2,700. Is there something that we're not doing there?
It was just to start replacing some that are getting older. Mrs. Campos thought we could hold off and as things are starting to become more digitally accessible and kids are using their Chromebooks, I think we were able, when we sat back down, to take some reductions because of the use of the Chromebooks and the accessibility they've provided. Where when we first budgeted, people were still hesitant. It was new to the kids. And now that the kids are on them and using them efficiently, we thought that could be a reduction for us.
And then I have, like just, it's a 3.7% decrease over last year's similar budget. It's also a fairly sizable, it's like $26,000 decrease from what was requested. What are we not doing in the middle school?
Some of it is because there are some programs that have been purchased that do not need to be purchased right now. I think the biggest programming purchase you'll see is in social studies. But because, like math, for example, is down drastically because this isn't a year where they need a new element. So in the past, they've either needed new textbooks or new manipulatives. Math will kind of stay status quo for a little time until those licenses start running out as we're going more digital. But just across the board, there was also some good reductions in some paper supplies due to the use of Google Classroom. I think kids are becoming much more efficient, so we've seen a decrease in some of the journals that for us are very costly. And as kids are using and submitting their work online, there's just not a need for some of those products.
I saw that you guys reduced your postage and your printing too. Thank you for that.
And I think that's helped as we work to have more emails in the system, more things that can be sent electronically. Being able to e-blast things is more efficient for parents because they always know where it is. You're not looking for that piece of paper. And it's reduced the mailings we have to send out.
Like any change is always tough, like going from analog to digital is challenging. Are you finding? Are you finding a net positive result in some of the changes that are being made in transitioning to digital?
Yeah. I think as, and I think in another year we'll see even more. I think as teachers, parents, and students all become more trusting of the systems, that I think we'll get to see some even more cost reductions and more efficiency.
I think that comes from the age demographics of the parents versus, you know, parents at different levels. Now, there are parents now who've been doing everything digitally for many years, so they're comfortable. Not all, but most parents are. And I'd just like to say that this budget that was done and when we speak to them, we went back to the administrators and said, "Let us know where you can cut back." The number one point was, "Let us know where you can go, cut back, that will not affect instruction or affect each student." I just want, as we go here and we see big lump sums like this that came back, everyone has our wish list that they want, but they came back with this without it going to affect instruction. I just think that needs to be said as we look at these big number drops.
It's impressive to cut three and a half percent plus and not affect students. That's great.
I think as we move, no, I think, I know, as we look forward and we look at this budget this year, where it is and where we're going to have to be in the future, and we look where digital access will save us more money. And of course, the licenses cost money because it's going to save us in other ways.
Can I ask one more question about the high school? About the high school, not the middle school?
Of course.
Or was it like speaking out for a whole degree? That $10,000 for the theater maintenance, is the theater club going to need to now rent something? Is there something that's non-functional enough where the theater company is going to have to use their own revenue in order to rent something that we could be providing?
It's not going to change what we rent. There is a speaker that's not working in the theater, but they tune the sound around it and it's adequate. The reality is that the sound in there is perfectly good for our drama club to do its performance. I mean, it sounds to us like it did. And the all-school musical has always rented external sound companies. So they've always had a Risen Sound, that's part of their budget, they do it annually. The theater, you know, at some point is going to need attention. But it's working and, you know, it's probably going to be a big job at the time. So I thought that was a sensible cut to make because it doesn't impact any kids and we're still able to do everything we need to do in there. You know, it's kind of a town theater anyway.
I was thinking that, because we utilize it for so many town meetings. Is there a way that that would be something that we could talk to the town about? All of our town meetings are held there.
Yes, it could be something.
Right, something that we could maybe, maybe talk about. Because I hate to see, we don't really have, do we have a line item for like our musical programs besides the instruction? Our extracurricular musical programs?
Extracur... I'm not following what you mean.
Like theater, like R&B, like those kinds of things, like...
You mean for the clubs?
The clubs, true, or, yeah, the theater club, all of those.
I mean, no, our clubs, I mean, we have something like close to 50 clubs, those are self-sustaining by the members, so no.
And the thing though, if we go back to the theater group and they're saying, you know, we need this, you know, and maybe we don't get it this year, but maybe we need to get it next year, maybe we should work with them on some other ways of activities or grants or fundraising that can help even within, as you just said, because it's a community theater, we reach out to the community to help fund that. But we also know that many of these groups are also, what we have may not be adequate for each production, so they go out and they're renting anyway. Maybe if something would come to say, add an extra dollar to ticket sales to each thing to finance that for next year. Just trying to look at creative ways as we look at where we are this year with our budget, without having anybody not get what they truly need for their club or for their usage.
And when we pay to have athletic practices in North Branford or at the Health and Rocket Place, is that a deposit that we pay to secure that space? And do we only pay that money if we use it? Or do we get that money back if it's not utilized based on weather conditions?
We only pay when we use it. There's nothing affronted to that.
I just, I just had one more question about the textbooks. And I wonder if you kind of alluded to it in your answer to Amanda. But, you know, the, it's kind of the exact opposite question here. Here, the social studies line item is significantly more than every other department. I'm just curious why.
Because this year they'll be purchasing a digital and hardcover social studies program. So their textbooks, where others are still using textbooks they have.
Yep.
And the eighth grade will need a new program.
So was there a turn to kind of upgrade?
Yes, yeah, I think it's sixth or seventh.
Seventh came in this year, so it'll be the next middle school to break it up.
Thank you.
Steve, can I ask a quick question about sports teams? Were any new sports teams added?
Nothing new is going to go to sport.
Yeah, no, any new sports. It's just the same, because I know in the past, there's been different clubs that have made proposals to, everything's the same. Okay.
We can move on to athletics. I know Steve has kind of filled some questions, we've had some athletic questions. The athletic department's next on the docket here, so I don't know if there are any additional questions.
I don't have an athletic budget.
It's built within.
I asked my question.
It was hidden, you couldn't see it.
Any athletics we didn't hit?
No, I guess, you know, our biggest cost is uniforms, right?
Transportation.
Transportation. And I do, I think transportation should be addressed because we're up for a new contract and we'll be going to bid. And we'll see where that comes.
When you look at like how much it costs to go to like Shelton and you see the cost of one bus trip there and back, it's kind of startling.
What's an Uber? What's an extraordinary Uber? It's probably not insured, though.
What is a run, Steve, to the top here?
I don't know specifically, but I mean, I would say something to Shelton and back is probably like $450 or $900. That's a guess, it's about that. We have a lot to bring to the table this year with M&amp;J around our bus contract. Pam has been digesting it and there's a lot of ambiguity to it, so we really need to iron some things out when we get back to the table.
Do they charge fees, like, sometimes they'll charge a fee going from, I don't know, tack a half hour on at the beginning and at the end, and that adds up to typically at least $100 bucks, you know, when you rent a bus like that. Is that a potential point of negotiation? At least to reduce things like that, those kind of little sticky fees?
We also have to keep in mind those little things, but we also have to keep in mind that they also give us free buses too, for different things, especially taking kids to after-school care. Am I right on that? That they do that, that they haven't charged us for some buses?
To boys and girls clubs, to rerouting from one school location to a different town location, they don't charge us. And also, they're willing to give us free buses if things come up. When we had a parent pass away last year, they offered a free bus to take the students to the services.
So that's something to keep in mind. I know you said that bus contract's up for negotiation, but I'm just saying there are some smaller fees that are repeated over and over that we could add up and figure out what that total is because...
I think that's our goal, is that since I've been here, I have expressed that it's one of the more comprehensive contracts. There's just, we get charged for so many extras that really are normally just part of the regular. And I'm not necessarily saying that equates to them being much higher than any other bus company. It just makes for very difficult evaluation and even budgeting for that matter.
Especially for teachers who would like to do field trips. If they want to go anywhere beyond, you know, just our little area here, it gets really, really pricey and then the parents have to absorb that cost as well as part of the field trip.
Never mind the destination.
Right, 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 exactly. So you've got the fee for the destination. So an Eli Whitney trip, for instance, is about 12 bucks a kid. And then if you add the cost of the bus there and back, you're getting, you know, up to prohibitively expensive.
And it's a very unique contract. I mean, to Steve's point, when you look at the back of the contract, it literally lists every town and what the cost is for that town is not something I've been accustomed to. It may have even commented that they, I think, whomever in the past, maybe that's how they wanted it. But I think we can tighten it, is my point, whether it's with them or whomever as we move forward. Definitely.
And they've shown willingness, they've come this week with Pam and I numerous times and offered us some flexibility in the contract and also to get to the table in the wishing. They realize some confusion there.
Pam, just when you get a chance, look at what our contracted price was and then what we've had of date extra. And just let us know what that is. I think that's... And I know, of course, it was sealed bid, but when it comes, but those are the things that we want to make sure we have listed in our bid process.
So anything additional around athletics that you did not touch on? I know, Steve, you have a game.
I was going to say, do you want to run to that?
I'll hang around if you need to.
To that basketball game?
They need you too, so we're good if you want to shoot. Thank you. Yes. All right, so we'll move on to our IT department. Address any questions or need for detail around there.
I do have a question on page one. It's the communication and network, communications and network line item. How did we cut 25% from that this year? Amazing.
It was a combination of different things. Some of the smaller things are going out and getting a lot of different pricing on licenses and they come to. But actually, the most significant change here was we went from being a 40% reimbursement district to 50% reimbursement district for the grade, which that alone adds about 20 grand back in. So that's the largest part of it. The things that, you know, we're doing this year, ramping our backup systems and hatching different things for the network. That work is being done now, so we don't need it done next year. We should be fine.
Here's like manifest money all over the place, I love it. Great, just 50 grand, there it is, love it.
So I have a question. 1416, can you add more detail as to what exactly falls under there? So the other part, you want that 231 for 69?
Is this in the, is it the end of 5,900 or?
It's under 5,900.
Yeah, it's 1416.
So the $243,000 amount.
Yeah, yeah, just what exactly falls under there?
Absolutely, that's a combination of a variety of licensing. It concludes, includes our financial system payment, which we share with the town, but that's a huge chunk. It's the most expensive piece of software.
But they play their own part, though.
They play their own part, but we pay our part as well. And it's the financial system, HRIS can be pricey. The SIS, which is Student Information System, best known to people here as Power School, that's in there along with registration programs, our emergency alerting system. So when you get those snow day calls or those emails, which has saved money in terms of being able to email out report cards and letters and those kinds of things, that's in there. It's a very wide combination of licensing that affects more utility licensing for the district versus the ones at the schools are more academic programs, like the specific program for math at the middle school or a specific program for science at the high school. And so that's why those 5,900 items are building-based versus the ones that are larger systems that are used by the entire district are what you find in that account there.
Okay, and there's an increase, so I guess the licensing fees ran up?
Some of them, yeah, some of them did go up from last year.
Okay. Yeah, licenses are very expensive, that's a great business to do.
Yeah.
Invent something and just license it up.
Yeah.
And jack up the price every day, you don't have to change anything.
Every day.
So there are two different sets of, like, at the end of page two, there's like one set of leases and then there's another set of leases on the new report, which is page one after that.
But the only leases that hit your budget, because we changed the account code, as I mentioned last week, they were budgeted in the 2560 and that's where they will be, but I had a little litmus unit so I had to put them into the 2320, which is that separate report at the very end. So you can compare the total of 588,18680, which is at the bottom of page two, to the 649,740 that is in this budget for fiscal year 21.
And then it looks like out of this budget's leases, roughly 30K was cut from the, between the requested and what's presented. Can you talk about what was in that 30K?
Sure, so we've gone back and done some different competitive pricing. It's time to refresh some of the desk tasks at the high school in the computer labs and the AutoCAD lab specifically. So went back out and got some different pricing from some different vendors, see if we could get some savings there. And we also are going to get some less of those ClearTouch TVs, but we have to continue to develop on that based on the fact that the Eno boards in the classrooms, of course, themselves may continue to work, but the pens are dying and you can no longer purchase them because they're no longer manufactured. So if we don't keep up on that at a decent rate, then we'll run into some problems. But we did cut back on that and that's the majority of that chunk that you're looking at.
How are the ClearTouch TVs working out? Everybody like them?
They like it a lot.
That's, I love to watch the kids with them and the variety of things that they do with them from the elementary level up through the high school level, it's very, very different. I love to see the things that the art classes visually are doing with them. But in math, they have some really excellent applications on their graphic paper that's built directly into the TV for the teachers to use. They're very flexible in different ways. We're even, you know, using them with some of our students to help accommodate for them in different ways with, you know, spring share software directly from the TVs and so on. So they're really versatile machines. And some people who I think may not have wanted an Eno are asking for ClearTouched, so I think that's...
Oh, that's great. That's good. That's all I had.
Andy Crowley with IT. We can move on to Mr. Diana in facilities.
Okay, so the first question I have is about the electricity. What's going on there?
I'm going to address that one.
A 24% increase.
As you may recall, I recorded it out last year when I arrived here, but I did not discover this until June, that we had an additional expense that the town would provide to us in the amount of approximately $25,000 a month. And that was part of, I believe, Johnson Controls and some of the improvements that were done through one of those energy-saving programs. So really, I believe your electricity costs should have remained constant from whatever point in time that you actually started the program. I can't tell you what happened, I can only tell you that last year, our total expense for electricity was $1.158, I think, 1,158. So our projection includes not only that cost, but we now added a solar monthly cost that we were not aware of until this year as well.
So where we have budgeted for 2020 at 958, it's actually 1.15 is what ended up being spent. And we're assuming...
That this year as well.
Will be like a slight increase for 2021 because we have 1.185.
Our 2020 for this year that we're in is also significantly under budgeted. So we initially put in 1.2 million and then when we started to look at reductions, we took another look at what last year came to. We added in the solar and that's how we came to $1,185,000 that we see now.
Okay, so I've got to understand that. I like to remember our talk with you and I remember being at the meeting.
So two things with solar. One, I thought we're looking at all these things to save money. What kind of background were, were, you know what? Can you come over here and sit center? You're not going on the side. I need to see you.
If I can.
No, excuse me. Can you go in the center seat there? Really, 'cause I can't see you.
All right, any, all right. So one of the costs, I believe, was 750 a month for the middle school, solar. We negotiated this and batted that around during the build of the new school. Should we put the solar? Should we not put the solar? Should we put it? It was, my understanding, I, I, I thought it was gonna be budget neutral. I had no idea that it was a $750 a month maintenance fee that goes with this. So basically, the system's warranted. If something happens to the system, they come out and fix it. They electronically monitor it.
Who, who, okay. Let me understand that. So you're saying 750 a month for them to maintain a warranted product?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Pretty much. I, I had no idea that there was a cost involved in it. We thought it, there was no cost.
Can I ask who was the?
Going forward cost.
Is it too late now? Who's done the negotiation on this?
So that was, that's the one that was done through the town.
By the building committee.
Yeah, so it was the contractor that did the thing for the town also that was doing this one. And I remember there was nothing, the way it was, it was presented, it was supposed to be, this is, exactly, this is like free stuff.
Buried into the contract, Goldie, was solid cost.
Okay. Would you recall?
No, I recall the way it was presented to us was there was, it was a no cost thing. You'll save all this money, this and that. We'll come out there, fix this, fix that. So it seemed like a no-brainer. You know, it was a company that was connected with the town project to the town solar project. But I mean, I didn't see the contract. Obviously, I didn't sign the contract. I didn't see the details of the contract. But the way they represented, presented it to us, it was, seemed like a good deal regarding saving money and also in regards to electricity too. So that's news, that's news to me.
We went back to Jeff, who signed the contract, negotiated the contract and questioned him on it and the cost was in it.
So are we saving any money?
That's a very good question. We really don't know because it's a brand-new school. So if you try and look at what we were paying at the old middle school compared to what we're paying at the new middle school, it's not a very good.
Yeah, and it's, it's, you have much, a lot, a lot more technology. It's a larger space and all that. So you can do that apples-to-apples comparison. You can do now.
High school building's only 10, 11 years old. What do we pay for the high school versus what we're paying at the middle school?
For electric? I'm not sure of the difference, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't.
Just wondering if we talk about that.
I know it's, I know it's a lot more 'cause the school is 120,000 square feet larger. So it's, we're definitely paying more at the high school.
Is the solar supposed to get us a discount or is it simply, this is just good for the environment move?
Both. It's supposed to offset costs. We're supposed to be selling electricity back to the company. Again, not sure how, how it's working.
Well, it is what it is here, but I, I would like, enter again, Pam, that at some point, somebody comes talk to us and explain to us why this increase versus why we were, we were under budgeted for two years, basically, for this and why now it is where it is. Because there has, there, you know, I look at this and that's a lot of money.
Right. And I thought the whole point of the solar was, both of those things, was to get yourself a bit of a credit and help the environment.
I mean, it wasn't, the environment thing was not the major thing. It was the cost. You know, it was the cost. So when it was being presented to, to the committee, it was more the cost. You know, the environment thing was secondary.
Yeah.
And, and we did discuss that quite a bit, the cost, the fact, the fact that it was not going to cost us.
Any help from charge cost.
But they just never, or they failed to represent that $750 a month. I never saw it. I was in all the meetings. Goldie was in all the meetings. I know you, you never saw it. They never presented that cost to us.
Phil, is there a cap on that 750? After three years, it will no longer be there or anything since?
I, I don't know that. That would, we'd have to go back to Jeff to know if you're asking that.
There is a cap on this 300,000 we pay a year. My understanding was it's five years. It's a, if it works the way, and I will get clarification.
Is this with Johnson Controls, that one?
Yes, if it works the way other energy programs that I've been part of work, it is just for a limited number of years because really what you're doing is usually financing at a 0% interest rate all the improvements that you've done for energy savings. And when I have spoken at the town about this, I was told that, we were told many years ago when this first came about or a few years ago, that it should just be budget neutral. So I honestly had not confirmed whether or not we did in fact reduce that line item the last couple of years we have.
Right, and, and we have to remember when we did that, that the upgrades to all the schools, the middle school is not included in that package at the time 'cause that's when we started construction and we were in development of the school. So that wasn't even part of the entire package.
At some point, are we allowed to cut them loose and find somebody else that, you know, sort of like any other contract that we have?
Makes, really, they're.
I don't know. I feel like I'm not, I don't have a deep understanding of this and my questions are overly simplistic, but it seems like.
My, um, I, I personally don't have an understanding of why we're paying that much money every month for what they're doing. And again, I was not aware of that. Christine negotiated all that with the finance department in, in the town, on the town site. I was not involved in all the costs associated with it. So again, I didn't know if, in the past, before Pam got here, if we were actually paying $25,000 a month. So that was never actually part of my budget. That was something that Christine would have done and Tina would have done.
So I, I get that there's 750 a month for the maintenance of the solar panels, but what is the other electric cost for the middle school? Do we know, like, approximately what that monthly cost is?
Yeah, we, we have individual, I don't have that in front of me. We get billed individually for each school. So yes, we can figure that out. And in that, we have the lighting for the football field is in that. The town uses that. So we also pay for that. The lighting for the new turf fields, that's into the middle school also. So.
Is our lighting through United Illuminating?
I'm sorry.
Is our lighting, do we do like?
Yes, UI.
On UI, just a 25% increase.
Wait, wait a minute. Is it UI?
Partially a generation fee. And the transmission is through UI Eversource.
Or something.
And then we have, and I, the name of the company, I shouldn't remember.
Okay, kinda like what I do at my house. That's an electric house. Right. I have somebody else. I just wanted to.
And I should also mention that Phil and I have talked about this and Ian and our office has worked on a spreadsheet because we didn't have one here and I've always capped usage. You know, what, how many kilowatt hours are we using in each building? Because you can't really just compare dollars, obviously, the cost of electricity increases. So we've just started doing that. Unfortunately, we didn't have it in the past, but it's something that we use as we move forward.
Any other questions?
So we're paying to light the football field?
Mm-hmm. Even for the walkers that night.
All year long.
That's correct.
Not, not the, not the.
Both of them.
But, not the turf.
No, no, no. Not someone across the street called.
Vanacore.
Vanacore. We're not Vanacore, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I thought that was.
That's off our utilities. Always has been. So it's, it's not, it's not as simple as saying middle school uses this much electricity. But you have to take that into consideration on both sides. It's quite an expense.
And there's no way to figure out how much that field will generate?
You can put a sub-meter on and see what it's, you know, see how much you're using and then calculate it yourself. It's gonna be much easier to do that now with the new stand that was put in. So we would be able to sub-meter with the new stand that's going in.
Should be something to look into.
But otherwise, we did reduce a couple of lines to help Pam out. I didn't have any choice, but we did. And we hope, everything should be running much better next year. Since Pam came, we've done a lot of, made a lot of changes, separating, finding out where exactly money is going, so.
Can we save a lot of money on cleaning supplies just by using vinegar and water? That's non-toxic. It's good for the environment.
Until one of the kids are allergic to vinegar.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
We actually.
Put a little lavender oil in there to make them relax during the day.
We actually redid the cleaning, the cleaning supply contracts and it looks like we're gonna be saving some money on that side.
Yeah, I saw that. That's where I was coming up with custodial supply.
We're also saving money on the contract we did for the high school and middle school. We reduced that quite a bit also.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Jerry. Where are we saving money?
Where are we saving money?
I heard you say we're saving money.
Cleaning services for the high school and the middle school. Cleaning services contract. We reduced that by like 30 or 40,000 dollars, something close to that.
20.
Was it 20? And also in the cleaning products that our custodians use, we've made some changes to that also. We're not exactly sure what that's gonna be yet, but we know we're making, we're, we know we're saving money. We're paying less for the products we're using. Now it's just a matter of managing how much we use.
I think we've talked about this before, but we're renting a building somewhere. Aren't we referred to house?
Grounds, it's pretty much maintenance and grounds.
How big is the building?
It's 6,000 square feet.
6,000 square feet. And we like need that, I'm guessing.
What's that?
We like need that.
Do we like need that?
We have nowhere to store our stuff. You can't like, you can't like take them somewhere.
It's where all our equipment.
Are you volunteering some space in your house?
I mean, I don't have 6,000 or 4,000. Thank you for thinking I do that.
It's where all our equipment is. All our mowers, all our huge tractors, all our trucks, all our maintenance gear, equipment, everything.
'Cause that did go up.
Yeah, probably about 2%.
From last year, yeah. There was a big jump two years ago.
Yes, 'cause a new owner purchased the property that we're in and renovated the entire area and building.
Is this the one 440D?
440D, yeah.
For us to sign the new lease with him, he hit his heart.
Where is this building?
I will tell you.
Giles Avenue.
We rewrote the, we did an identity.
We don't want anybody to know. No, it's right outside.
So it would have gone up more.
Oh, okay.
It's all the way down the end, like Giles. There's a, you get to the bottom, there's a V. There's a, a construction company next to us on this side. And on the left, there's a bunch of rental facilities.
You do have a 10-year contract. How far are you into that contract?
I think we're only in year two or three of the 10-year contract.
Yeah.
I have a question about that white shack that's on the track.
It's coming, it's, it's, the town has issued a purchase order for it to be taken down.
Oh, good. 'Cause it looks like it could fall down.
Yeah, yeah, it's coming down.
That's where we're gonna house all the equipment.
All the equipment.
Yeah, the town is, they, they have given the contractor a purchase order.
Okay, and so it will come down and just, just playing the space.
It'll be all cleaned up.
Perfect for graduation.
Oh, it'll be wait, it'll be done before spring.
Can I ask a question about 620B? Just clarification. 620B qualification, it's under heat and gas. Looks like there's a, about 50,000 reduction, if I'm reading it correctly. So what's the reasoning behind? I mean, I'm happy, but what's the reasoning behind? I just want some clarification.
I'm telling you, go ahead, yeah.
We're cautiously optimistic that based on our history, last year, we were well under 100,000 from what we were budgeting. Now, we're not really sure if that is because we have the middle school running much more efficiently. I don't think it was an abnormally mild winter last year. We always take degree days into consideration when we look at our assessments and evaluate what our budget number should be. And we're holding our breath that it's gonna be the same this year. But I, I think it's a reasonable amount to reduce it by.
Okay.
What is 4900, other purchased property, service, custodial supply? 613A.
That was water.
Water?
Yeah.
Like the garden, that may be.
Water and drinking water and flushing toilets, water and every bit of water. You're at the district.
And we did very well. We're trying to manage the sprinkler systems a lot better. We had a very wet spring, so I was able to leave the sprinklers off a lot longer this year and shut them off a lot earlier.
What I don't see in here, maybe I missed it somewhere, is like snow, snow removal. Did I miss that? You know, pay for snow removal, correct?
Overtime.
I didn't miss anything.
Overtime, we have an overtime.
Yeah, it's an overtime.
That would be in your salaries in the beginning.
Okay, thank you. I'll just flower gas for this. The electric bill, kind of.
Should have seen me and what it means.
You know, it's different when you look at it and then when you talk about it, if you, if you see it and you see the number, and then when you talk about it.
Remember, you have, you have about 500,000 square feet building, buildings that you're feeding, cooling and running electricity on. So it's a substantial amount of property.
So now down here in our five-year improvement plan? I know Russ has left it left, so maybe it's good when I say that.
Five-year capital?
Capital, yes. Wouldn't it be better just to paint the auditorium? That's what I was thinking.
Well, to get, to get the sizing off the walls and everything, it's a big deal.
I think it's something to consider. I know it.
Yeah, I, I would fully agree with you.
Could be a one-time bigger expense because of that.
Yeah, I would fully agree with you.
I don't know. It's something that I'm thinking about. I don't know, it's something that I'm thinking about, if we can save thirteen thousand dollars there at some point versus twenty-six thousand.
It's a huge undertaking because of the staging that you need to work in there, because the theater slopes. So it's, it's a large undertaking.
So can I ask where you get these charges?
Eventually, though, we won't have to take it down. It'll just fall down.
What about, you know, where are you getting this, replace the front carpet in the auditorium? Are you talking about just in front?
Mm-hmm. The auditorium, the entryway.
When you come into the, I'm trying to understand what you mean.
It's, before you even walk into the auditorium, you have the broad room, I call it.
In between the gym and the auditorium.
Oh, yeah, it's like where they set the tables. Oh, you mean where sometime we do all that.
Yeah.
Where did you get a price of eighteen thousand dollars for that?
It's removal, oh, I, I get square footage prices. We use that by carpet, or by yards, actually, square foot yards. And then entering the buildings, all that carpet, and almost all our entryways is lifting and peeling.
Yeah, well, wasn't that the press and seal squares or something?
It wasn't press and seal. It was a very bad product that they put in. The product that we have actually in the hallway out here, it's a two-by-two square, and it's an excellent product, and as you can see, we put it in four years ago. It's, looks the same as when we put it in. The good thing about the squares, as opposed to the broad room that's in front of the theater, is when one square gets stained, you can lift it and just put another square in.
Phil, this is not part, it's not included in the budget. This is just separate document.
No, this is a wish list that we do, and what we're mandatory, we have to produce a five-year capital plan.
Okay.
So Laurie, you know, it's hard for me to read this. I don't have my glasses enough for there. And I read this, I, I got mixed up, and I thought it said roof replacement under the North Haven Middle School.
Yes, seating up, so it's only a one-year.
It's only, it's only, it was only a one-year warranty.
So the people are three years.
I saw the files collapsing.
I do want to talk about roofs, because I taught in two schools that had leaking roofs and really destroyed, destroyed the middle school. I mean, really did.
And we have four, our four elementary schools need roof replacements.
Right.
Absolutely.
But I'm noticing the first one that's going to be done is Clintonville in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Which is a wish list.
Well, well, leave me.
Well, Ridge, Ridge Road and Clintonville are the ones that need it. Actually, I would say Ridge Road and Montowees probably need it first.
Okay. Yeah, because I was at Montowees when they replaced the roof. And I think that was like nineteen ninety.
Twenty-five, thirty years.
Yeah, yeah, nineteen ninety-five.
Excuse me, Phil.
Yes.
You budgeted it differently, you know, your wish plan, you have, let me finish. You have Clintonville in twenty-one, twenty-two. You have Green Acres twenty-four, twenty-five. You have Montowees twenty-three, twenty-four. And Ridge Road twenty-two, twenty-three. What you just said...
I might have twisted them around.
Okay. Which one's other priority?
I would say Montowees and Ridge Road are the priorities.
What do you think, Clarita?
I will, we may quiet right now. I think they all need to be done, so whatever order needs to be done.
They do, they do all need to be done, and which one is worse than the other? Which one costs less to maintain would be Clintonville. Montowees, because it's a stone roof, costs a lot more to maintain. And we've been having a lot of consistent problems in Montowees, and we've spent a lot of money.
And I know this is a wish list for, you know, a capital improvement plan, but we have also had some conversation, or we plan to have conversation in the future about our elementary schools. And I thought Ridge Road might have been the first one to renovate to new or build new. So under that, we would have the roof into that. So do we look into this and do twenty-one, twenty-two, make a roof? Spend one point two million dollars on a roof? Or what is our plan for capital for a new building?
Right, and I think a new building is probably the way the state is trending is really out of question. It's more of the renovation.
Yeah, I mean, to renovate them, no matter what way we look at it, you're going to have to do a study. Is it, is it smarter to renovate to new than we have? Or is it smarter to build new? I mean...
Many schools, districts, and states are no longer building new schools.
So if that's where the state's going, I don't want to spend fifty thousand dollars on a study to have somebody tell us what we already know. The fifty thou, yeah, I don't know how much studies cost, but I know they're high like that. And if we're doing four at fifty thousand dollars, we're talking two hundred thousand dollars. Okay.
I mean, and we know what we need. We know that we need to do Ridge Road. Ridge Road's the oldest school we have. It needs the most work. So that would be the starting building. Which way we want to go with it, that would be up. To you, it's a solid, it's solid, solid structure building. Structurally, very solid. But the heating system is, is terrible. I mean, there's heating pipes that go through the concrete floors that we have no idea where they are, where they've been, you know, they were done in.
I think what we should do is, come springtime, let's put together an internal board of ed committee, yourself and your member, to start talking about the elementary schools. Okay, you all agree, think that's a good idea, put together a committee and just take a look at that and work on it step by step, what we need to do. And just make, I think it's time, whether it happens next year, two years, but at least we need to start putting this in the planning stage.
We're going to be looking at some renovations, Jen and I, with the advent of passing the...
Security.
Security building, the security money for the building. So that will change a lot of the entrance ways.
Understood.
And they will be all upgraded. So these are things that we need to look at sooner than later.
That's a good point to bring up to us. Tell me something else that I see here. Why do all the schools need a replacement of the fire alarm panel? At thirty-five thousand dollars?
We are stuck in, with equipment that our contracted, our contracted service technicians can't work on. They have to actually call into these special manufacturers, because they're a prioritized system, and pay a hundred and eighty-five dollars per person to come out and work on them.
Okay, all right, just go back one second. So we have a contracted maintenance company who does our fire alarm?
They do our security. They do our monitoring.
But before we sign the contract with them, they didn't look at the fire panel? So in my book, they owe us, because if we contracted them out and they can't do what we contract, signed a contract for.
Here's my problem. I don't do that contract. That's done townwide. And it's done by the town. I was not allowed to split off from it. I requested to be split off from it, and they would not let me. The last contractor that I had here had a staff member that could work on all that equipment, and we didn't pay that. I was asked to be released.
So we're at a hundred and forty thousand dollars for that. All right, we'll table that.
If you had to replace every panel, sure.
We'll table that.
And it's possibly more, depending, that's if you can use all the existing cable.
All right. Another thing for our committee to talk about. Thank you.
So there's a big jump between the total wish list items for this year and next year, and that, that jump sustains itself. So this year, we're looking at a hundred and thirty-four thousand, and then, and then it's like one point three million, pretty much, for the rest of it, largely due to replacement roofs. What would it look like if we don't take act, if we choose to prioritize Ridge Road and don't take action on other roofs?
You're going to keep spending good money on repairs.
So can you talk to me about how much we spend repairing roofs versus replacing them?
Well, that all depends. I mean, I could go from some years, five thousand to twenty-five thousand.
But it's twenty-five thousand versus two hundred thousand?
But how many times do you want to spend?
Why don't we rephrase that question, if it's okay, Amanda, if I can ask a question? How many times have, have you had to repair those roofs?
Every year, repairing every school.
Okay, and they are running in a price range of what? I know it's hard to put it, you don't have to tell us now, but next time we talk to you or next PTA meeting, let us know what those repairs have been running you.
Yeah.
I said PTA meeting. Our next board meeting.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's very subjective on how much it costs each time. And it all depends. Some are recurring, because you just can't get to the bottom of them. Right, Clarita? And, and, you know, some you just have to keep chasing. They're flat roofs, they were done old style, they have stone on the top of them. It's very hard to chase down the weeds.
Okay.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I react to this really big time. Because again, of my experience working in the North Haven school system, and in two buildings, Montowees was a mess. I mean, there would be tar and stuff dripping from the ceiling, and we'd be catching in buckets. And then, it was gross, it smelled gross. And we were running the gauntlet, and then they came and they, they did a whole new roof. And that took care of that issue. But again, that's about twenty-five years ago.
Well, two years, two years ago, I had to take a wall down on the exterior of the building. We had to take all the brick off the wall.
All right, so we understand that, that you, we have to do that work, and that you've done that. So let's just take, approve the review. If you could get those numbers for us, just so that we can have it when we put together our board of ed committee, and we can have an idea of what our next steps are.
Okay.
And I don't know, maybe we can find a tree in the backyard somewhere.
So one other thing on the capital budget, one thing that's not on here is the turf replacement. Where our warranty is going to be up.
This is five year.
This is five years, yeah. But our warranty, correct me if I'm wrong, is runs out twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year.
Ten years.
Ten years.
Ten years?
Yeah.
So that's, okay, that gives us a couple more. Thank you. Wait, the warranty is, I thought the warranty was seven. I thought the expected life was ten, but the warranty was seven.
Warranty is ten years.
Warranty's ten. Thank you.
The expected life is fifteen. That's what I expect.
Okay, that's not, that's not a discussion part, not even a discussion, a debate for another time. I do have that information somewhere in my home office about the warranty, if you wanted to see it.
Ten years is great, like, that's...
So now I see that you're looking for a new lawnmower, a hundred-and-eight-inch lawnmower, a four-foot, and a sixteen-inch mower.
These are things we're going to need eventually, for sure. Our present Toro lawnmower, it's a hundred-and-eight-inch, I mean, we have two hundred acres of property that we cut. And we have a hundred-and-eight-inch Toro mower right now, inside cab, and it's almost thirty years old. So we've been maintaining ourselves, luckily, and my staff have several guys that are very mechanically inclined, along with the town garage. We've cut back on spending, before I got here, eight thousand a year, sending the machine out. And we do all our own maintenance on it now. Oil changes, grease, filters, blades. So we've been taking care of it, and it runs fairly well. If you look at it, it looks kind of...
Weathered.
Weathered. So eventually, we are going to need to replace that.
So tell me, what is this electrician's truck? Is it a brand-new truck that you want to lease or you want to buy?
Yes, his truck is on the way out. I mean, again, we're maintaining it. We've gotten upgrades to all our vehicles except that truck.
So what's different about his truck versus our other trucks? Can't he use our other trucks or anything?
No.
Because...
Well, one, his is a utility truck.
Okay.
Body. And his only other one, which is the plumber, he has a utility body.
Okay.
But that would be something you would consider leasing or buying new?
I would do like we've done with these other trucks and lease them. We're getting a seven-year lease presently on the ones we have. And at the end of the lease, we buy out some dollar.
So they need a truck, like Uber is again, out of the question?
Gee, nobody ever asked me about my capital before. I'm excited.
Well, because when you see something that is big numbers on here, you notice four schools need a new roof.
Yeah.
Four schools may, may need fire replacements. Dr. Della, you, you did miss it. I wanted to know, why can't we just place, paint the auditorium instead of put wallpaper up there?
Well, why can't we? You tell me why.
I don't know. They have it in there to replace some wallpaper in the auditorium.
Well, I mean, the problem, I, I, we're fortunate that the, the paint underneath the wallpaper is roughly the same color, or it would look like a Ringling Brothers part of production, because it's fallen off in sheets. But I don't know, that's certainly something we can look at.
If it's falling off in sheets, could, could it mean that it just needs to be re-glued?
Well, right, and has it faded over time? I don't know, but I am perfectly open to the idea of painting those roofs.
Anything further on the budget?
I do have one more question, and it, but it's on the overtime for the facilities folks. Let me see if I can find it. For the maintenance folks. So are we trending okay on overtime this year?
Absolutely, and we actually ended the year last year lower than we had projected as well.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was, I was talking about holding here.
Well, the answer to the question with regard to our trend with overtime is we ended the year with a considerable savings last year, and we are trending very well this year. And I do believe a small part of that, at least a small part of that, is because we are doing a much better job of making certain that we bill for those organizations that use our facilities and should be charged overtime, should be charged for custodial fees. And we make certain that the town is properly crediting us.
Yeah, I do thank Phil for that, because, you know, he, two years ago or so, it really brought it up to our attention.
Yeah, it's very positive.
Were we being, were we billing these people?
We have been doing a better job with that. Anyone else?
Well, that concludes our, our budget presentation for this year. Again, it's a five-point-four percent increase overall. We will make the adjustments within the budget for thirty thousand dollars. Have the high school budget to accommodate that. We had mentioned earlier if you'd like to pull up.
Well, let's just talk about that. Actually, let's make the motion, okay? And then we can discuss about if we need to do that, or you can just come to, come to us. But, you know, I look at, we're saying the budget and the capital budget, that... I don't know, I'm not sure, I'm not getting myself convinced. I've got to think I'm looking at capital budget as his, as Phil's budget.
Something separate.
Everything separate.
Yeah.
Okay, now I've got to get in my mind. Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the superintendent's budget recommendation of fifty-seven million, five hundred twenty-four, two hundred and forty-five dollars for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year? So moved. Second?
Second.
So a discussion. So basically, what we need to do is we need to add thirty thousand dollars adjustment into that budget. Do you believe you'll be able to take it from?
I have some suggestions. We have been running very well, pending unemployment, it's always available. But we are year-to-date expenses only seven thousand dollars. So I had already lowered it from fifty to forty. So I'm recommending we take ten thousand dollars from there, and we would have a budget of thirty thousand for unemployment. My second recommendation would be the district-wide staff development that I mentioned earlier. And we had put twenty-two thousand in there, and that's under the purview of Mr. Stirk and Mrs. McKenna. And we would potentially reduce that by ten thousand. So we would still have twelve thousand in that account. And then pleasantly, the SRO costs that we budgeted fifty thousand dollars for, last year, our total was twenty-eight thousand. And I personally spoke to the police chief, because I really didn't understand how we were billed for that. And he was very gracious to take some time to explain it to me. And obviously, I'm sure all of you know, that we're really just being charged for the overtime costs that they incur. And he thinks that that is probably a pretty good gauge, what we experienced last year. Of course, I know it's a new program, but we did just last week, or not even last week, earlier this week, I'm losing track of my days. We received our first invoice from the police department, and it was under ten thousand dollars. So I think we will stay under thirty thousand again. It could be thirty-five. So I'm comfortable lowering that from fifty to forty. So that still gives us a little buffer, should anything come up that we just haven't accounted for. So those three areas would give us our thirty thousand dollars.
So... They came up with the thirty thousand dollars fairly quickly, so thank you for that. And it's helpful to kind of understand. My question is, aside from that thirty thousand, if we were to say that five-point-four is not acceptable, what would we go to next?
I will defer that to Mr. Stirk.
So we've had some conversations around that. And it would move to staffing. And the, the initial book would not necessarily touch kid, touch students. We would look at player call, support services, those type of things to start. But again, those, those resources are limited. So within a certain amount of cuts, we'd be, we'd be quick to catching students in.
So I think it's really important to have specifics with regard to what would have to go when this goes before the board of finance. Because past experience, we know that they're going to look at five-point-four and say, oh, my God. And they just are, you know, and I have no doubt that they will. That this will not be a smooth, okay, we're going to accept it. So they have to know what our students are going to lose if they aren't going to accept it. So I'm suggesting, I, I'm just saying this as a suggestion, as sort of a preemptive strike, sort of, you know, so that they know what it is that they're taking away from our kids, if they take something away. And I, I just, I can't say how important I think that is.
So we did, just to provide some specifics around it. The team looked at, potentially, we got cut down to a four-point-eight or a five-point-eight, somewhere around there. And some of the specifics will be not having that HR position that we asked for. Looking at IT, a support person within there, potentially a secretary within that unit. So those are where we're looking early as far as specifics.
Before you, it would affect... Before you, it would affect the students, correct?
Correct.
And if those positions had to be eliminated, do you have an idea of where it would be down to or you don't want to even talk about that right now?
Again, I think it's somewhere between the 4.8 and, around 4.8.
Which is still significantly higher than anything we've gotten in recent years, right? So then what?
So then we're, we're looking at school staff. We're looking at interventionists, we're looking at our coordinators. That whole program in itself would potentially have to be disrupted in order to accommodate because the last thing we want is increased facilities.
I know, this isn't a discussion anybody, anyone wants to, but I think it's important that we know.
Put it out there.
As Wes said.
Well, it's important that they know.
Right. And we had said from the beginning, this was our year to get right. There were, there were a lot of, Pam came on, there were a lot of different things that, adjusting things, putting things, right? And, and we have no money for anything else.
And that's, so the 5.4 gives us the services that we currently have, no more, no less. And that's what I felt bringing forward to all of you, wanted to make sure that we were able to maintain that status, like as Amy had said, to get by and then next year and years forward to kind of progress.
Do we have any preview or understanding of what the grand list might look like this year? Based on, I know we, we just did revowls and, and all that good stuff, but we had Amazon. So I'm just wondering, like, if, if we understand, like, if there was enough top line revenue added?
I don't have a confident understanding of that.
Yeah.
Like you said, there's Amazon, there are things that we know of, but again, Mr. Freedom and Ed know that inside and out.
Just to bounce off of what Wes said, just to elaborate a little more, I'm also thinking, I think it was two or three years ago when Dr. Kornan was presenting the budget, he mentioned something about intervention. And someone on the Board of Finance was not understanding what we mean by intervention in the world of education. They went right to drugs. Like, that was their thought. So, which is understandable because they are not in that education mode. So when it comes time to explaining things like our intervention program, maybe elaborating what that actually means.
Of course.
Like, you know, you know, special services for reading and math and how many kids it affects and hours and adults. I mean, I know it will take time, but it's a significant amount of money and it's going to be remarkable, the changes that we would have to.
And it's 100% worth their understanding.
Exactly.
And what your, your regular staff would need to take on in the classroom in order to maintain the fidelity with the SRBI and what that even does.
I think it's also important to note to the taxpayers, as if you look at all the different, where is North Haven in those lists? Whoever makes those lists?
Yeah.
And where we are on our scores. We're always in the top percentages or there. And I think that has a lot to do with what we've been doing as a district for the last seven, seven years or so, 10 years or so, some district goals that we have met and are continuing to meet because of the education and the support staff that we have, intervention is our administrators, our teachers, our coordinators, who then have given up so much of, take away a lot of time from other people who are now able to do more to just enhance education. And that, I think, is important for our taxpayers to understand.
And I think when we do speak to the Board of Finance, it's important for them to know that we've already made some pretty drastic cuts to even get to the 5.4. There's, we are down in administrative, we eliminated a coordinator position. So there are, those are pretty substantial.
And we are, we are punching above our weight too, from a per, per pupil expenditure perspective. Like, we're below the average in our district reference group and our scores are much better than they are. So I think that's another thing to keep in mind, that we, we punch above our weight.
We're always within the top 30% of our Derg and we're in the bottom 50% as far as PPE goes. That's our value.
No, I was going to say, I mean, people, if you're proactive in saying, we're down in administrative, we're down in coordinator, that's what some people are going to be wanting to hear. That's going to be music to the ears. So, no, well, it's true. I mean, you know. So if you say it right up front, it kind of takes the wind out of their sails.
So what's driving the increase is all contractual obligations and special ed transportation?
And that 12.8% of our renewal was huge.
Yeah, I mean, there's things.
Electric costs. I was just going to say, electric costs.
Which is another thing that really needs to be explained too. Because the things that we're obligated to pay, I remember someone had a question about transportation for our students with special needs. Like, they don't understand how we need certain special transportation for some of our students. And that just was not understood. And I think the, all the special ed services too, it was not understood that we are legally bound to provide these services. And not for any other reason than they just didn't know.
Yep.
The toughest part is with the special student services is it's moving target. I mean, we're not just looking at students coming into the district, we're looking at students that are within our district that require different needs from day to day, week to week. So that, that target is so hard to really pin down and then access costs on top of it.
Yeah, and some of the kids, if, if, not the nexus, we have no say over what, the placement and the cost of the placement. People don't realize, some of our kids take rides to West Hartford and sometimes even out of state, you know? And that transportation is a big, big cost for, you know.
And Jen does a great job looking at the best placement for the student. It's not always the most economical, but we have to consider what's best for them. And if there are a multitude of them, then we look at that. But sometimes there's that one place that's the best for a particular student.
I don't think you'd have any of us disagree with you. That's definitely what we would want to do.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? The motion passes. Thank you for the hard work, all of you. I know that you all had to dig deep and you had to think hard to figure out where the best cut should come. And we, we as a board appreciate the work that, that you're doing.
So what's next? What's the next date or whatever?
Transmittal date in?
Yeah, I was asked to get our books and it'll be very similar to last year. Patrick, I've been working on them, so we'll make sure you get copies of them. They'll be there by next Friday at the latest on trying for Thursday.
And could it be at the end of the month, right? The 20?
No, they told us that they wanted it in.
No, when do we have our?
The 1st.
Right.
So do we have our 8 o'clock meeting?
Yes, the 1st. Thanks, Bill. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, adjourn the January 16th, 2020 Board of Education meeting? So moved. Second? All in favor? Aye. Meeting's adjourned.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.